There we are. All right. So we'll call this meeting to order at 6:01. First, I guess we do introduction. We've got some new members. So Doug Brown.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And Bill has been officially elected on.
Hi, everyone.
Congratulations, both of you guys.
Thank you.
You've been reelected, though, so.
Yes, I was. So there've been any changes to the agenda?
So there were a couple of changes to the agenda since it was posted. That's the addition of the consultant's invoice number 13113. I wanted to just add on, that's under old business. Sorry. Old Business C, I added on the discussion regarding the election results of 2022. And D is an update regarding the facilities committee. And on page two, I added in that the board should assign committee members for all of our committees for the year. So that's what was changed. One more change, I did receive an email from Randy Walker requesting that the discussion on Ingleswood subdivision be moved to the beginning of the agenda because he has to appear at the Wolfboro Planning Board tonight as well.
I'll make a motion to do so and approve the agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yeah, everybody out there.
All right. So with that being said, so we'll move to the top of the agenda here, conversation regarding tariffs. The back of the package.
So for tonight's discussion, obviously, we have Mr. Williams here as the applicant. Randy Walker is here as well, along with Dana Huff, who is the town engineer, and John Dever, who's the code official.
Mr. Chairman, I would accuse myself.
Thank you, Scott. All right. So Jessica, can you give us a very brief synopsis of why we're here discussing this tonight?
Okay, does everybody have an opportunity to look at my planner review?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I think tonight is just a chance for all parties to be involved in a discussion so that we can kind of know where to begin, you know, kind of what comes next. I think that maybe we should come up with an action plan of items that need to get done. And then we can figure out how to get them done and what that involves.
So. It's got everything?
What do we have on this?
So you should find case P 20 dash oh two, 20 dash oh one, 20, 10 dash.
It's toward the back of the packet.
Yeah, toward the back of the package.
Right back. Yep.
P 20 oh one?
Yeah.
It starts with P 20 oh two.
P 20 dash oh two.
Yes, yep. So there was an overview written up here and, you know, good recap of kind of the whole situation that got us to where we are right now. And, you know, just to kind of, for the edification, there are covenants that are on certain lots that have since been sold and developed. And basically, how do we proceed from here? So, you know, this is kind of new territory for me. So so I think that probably the best approach to take at this point is to try and get a thought for where, you know, you think you'd like to go with this at this stage of the game. And then we can kind of talk it over with our consultant and, you know, the board and, of course, John Dever. So you've got thoughts as to what you'd like to see in?
Sure. So my name's Randy Walker. I work for Walker and Varney in Wolfboro. I'm here tonight representing Scott Williams and the W and W Ralph Trust, which is a developer of the Ingleswoods subdivision. And number one, I want to thank you for moving me up on the list because I do have to be in Wolfboro for another presentation later. This was a three-phase subdivision, just bought approved back in 2014. So it was eight years ago. And Phase One, which was lots one through five and 12 to 14, little odd numbering system, but that's all done, finished, lots have been sold, houses have been built, occupied, et cetera. The only thing that actually is left is one inch of top coat that needs to be put on on the road. Phase Two, which was lots six, seven, and eight, is why we're here tonight. And then there was a Phase Three, which has not been started or finished, and we're not really talking about that today. We're really just trying to focus on on Phase Two. And when the subdivision was done, the developer did not post a bond, nor was the developer required to post a bond. It was do the work first and sell the lot second. And this board required a covenant to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds back in 2014. It was recorded back in 2014. And the lots in Phase One were sold because they weren't under the covenant. And then the developer continued to sell some lots in Phase Two, completely forgetting that eight years ago this covenant was recorded. A number of buyers hired title companies to do the title search, and they must have missed the covenants. Clearly, there, there's no dispute that it's been recorded at the registry, but it got missed. And three people have bought lots in Phase Two despite the covenant, saying they weren't supposed to buy any lots in Phase Two until, you know, the this board signed off. And then three building permits were also issued for those Phase Two lots. Two certificates of occupancy, two certificates of occupancy have been issued, and houses have been built on two of the three Phase Two lots. And people living there not even knowing that there's a paper problem, you know, there's nothing wrong with the development. It's all built. They go back in and out. But there's a third lot that was sold. The house is 90% complete.
Not quite 90s.
Okay.
Weather tight.
99. But hopefully will be completed in April of this year. And there's a family that has sold their home that is trying to move in, that has a disabled child, and I can play the violin, it's on oxygen, et cetera. And they definitely are trying to get into that home because they rented back the home that they sold. And you can imagine the people they sold to would like them out. So we'd like to be able to have them get a certificate of occupancy as the ultimate goal today from our end. So bottom line, the train on this development got a little off the track. And I think there's blame can go around, but we don't need to place any blame on anybody. Mistakes have been made. And the question is, how do we map out a path forward that protects everybody? And I think there's a very simple solution, and that is that the developer posts a bond to make sure that the top coat for Phase One and Two, everything else is in, we believe, but that the top coat is done. The leaves of soils have been stabilized, grass, et cetera. But Scott got an estimate from G I, G M I, for about $34,000 to do the top coat for Phase One and Two. We chatted with the towns engineer, Dana to my right. And he had a higher estimate. And he basically thought maybe 50,000 was appropriate. But there are a few other things that need to be done. And Dana, you can jump in if I'm out of line here, but thought that 75,000 all in would be safe. And rather than dispute the amount at all, we'd be willing to offer tonight to post a bond for 75,000, which is more than than the top coat, almost double that, would cover hopefully any extraneous things. With a further caveat, if the towns engineer or the road agent or anyone else thinks that there's other things that need to be done, call us back in and we can talk about increasing it. The goal is, we want to make sure that the work that Scott was supposed to do is done. That protects the town. That protects the three homeowners that have already bought their lots, even though they weren't supposed to have bought them. And I think that's a very simple way going forward. If it had been done on day one, you wouldn't have the covenant issue at all. So my suggestion, if the board is amenable to this, is to require the developer to post a 75,000 dollar bond. Again, if the town engineer, I think that's a reasonable amount. And once that's posted, then the town can release the covenant on Phase Two lots because it doesn't need to be a reason to have the covenant because the bond is guaranteeing that that work has been done. And that will give some comfort to the two people that have bought lots and are living in their house already and allows the third one, I think, to to get a certificate of occupancy. One other issue is there was an AOT permit issued for this project. And given that was eight years ago, it expired somewhere along, well, it got extended and then expired. And Scott has hired an engineering company to have that reinstated. And that definitely needs to be to be done. And we have thought process was that we could make that actually a condition of the bond, you know, that the bond guarantees that he gets the AOT permit, or at least, you know, follows up on that. So that's sort of the the approach that we would like to have adopted if the board's inclined to go down that line. And we believe that it protects everybody, again, the homeowners that are already in there and the town going forward. And happy to ask, answer any questions that you you may have.
Okay, one of the things that definitely caught my ear was the your phrasing of the they shouldn't have bought, you know, because it really shouldn't have sold. I mean, let's let's face it, it shouldn't have been sold.
Absolutely.
I think it's a semantics thing, but I think that that's a small point worth bringing up. The AOT permit, I'm glad you did bring that up because that also brings up the concern, the construction of the road. And I know that that was not overseen by the town engineer that was assigned to it. I know that a bunch of testing was done and was provided, I believe, to you. And you've had an opportunity to review that. I don't know what the final results were of your review or.
So Dana Huff.
Excuse me. Yeah. Microphone.
Yeah, pull it right down.
Diane Bond, actually a resident of Alton. I live at 162 Dewitt Drive in Alton. So a couple of things. Yes, I've received number of reports. I've looked through them. But I don't have x-ray vision. I can't tell you. I didn't see the work actually go into in place. So it's very difficult for me to certify that those align with the the testing and the reports that I see align with what's actually in place. So my recommendation is to do a series of corrings so we can measure the depth of pavement pavement. And we can measure the depth of the gravels that have been put in there. Now, I also understand that gravel was substituted. There was a there was a ledge pack that was substituted for some of the gravel. And so instead of having a 12-inch base with a six-inch finer gravel on top to do the fine grading, we now have an 18-inch equivalent depth, 18-inch layer of different material. I don't have the specifications on that material. So if I can get.
I think you do.
Okay, I haven't, I have not reviewed that.
SW called it the density and the sieve test and things of that.
Okay, okay, then I will go back through.
And I'll look again for you.
Okay.
But also, I can add here, I have a late letter from Paul Metcalf, engineer for the state of New Hampshire. And if I could just read this in, I've attached a couple of typical sections of the current project that shows crushed stone course, crushed stone fine, crushed stone products are almost exclusively now due to the scarcity of bank run gravel. I've also attached a couple of pages from the DOT, specification issue 304 aggregate base course and allowable substitution materials. On many of our projects, the contractor chooses to use just one project product, crushed stone fine, and that was substitute is a substitute for the crushed stone course or the gravel. The substitution of the better project is always allowed. And I brought this to the previous engineer, and he wouldn't react to it. He said it was the board situation. In reading your review, you said it's the engineer's job. So we're kind of stuck on a hump on that issue. So.
It is the engineer's job.
I don't have a problem with that, but the previous engineer said he wouldn't address it because it was the planning board's job.
How was that? What's his name?
North Point Engineering, Kevin.
Can I just ask again, who did you talk to? Who was that email from?
This, I'll give it to you.
Or a letter?
Copy. This is Paul Metcalf for the District Construction Engineer of the New Hampshire DOT.
And we're only talking about the Phase Two road. The Phase One portion of the road was approved. Just Phase Two.
So was approved, was was installed with with gravel.
With gravel.
Both of the gravel layers.
Right, gravel was available at that point. Yeah, well, we we're not going to be down that end of it. We're just on this Phase Two section, correct?
Well, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, that the this whole process is so that the town would then accept the roads at some point in time.
But the previous gravels were inspected.
Yeah, I phase, as my understanding is, the Phase One gravels were inspected by the town engineer at the time.
And yes, he was there for the install.
So that's not the issue.
Correct. That's my understanding as well. So we're really focusing on Phase Two.
Correct.
Okay. We are talking about top coat on the entire Phase One, Phase Two.
That is correct.
Correct. Yes.
Yes.
So so my, I guess, Dana, my question is, is the the testing that you saw or the the results of the testing that you saw, was the frequency adequate?
It seemed to be, Mr. Chairman, it seemed to be adequate. But again, I would like to verify that what's in the ground is actually, what what's in the reports is actually in the ground.
What would you like for the frequency of those corrings?
So we're talking Phase Two. Phase Two is what, about?
Six fifty-ish?
Yeah, that's what I had as well, 675, something like that. I would think if we did three cores.
Okay, I'll schedule those tomorrow.
Let me know when that is.
Yeah, you'd like to be there.
I absolutely would like to be there.
Fine.
So that I can verify that the materials that are in place are, A, the, you know, the type of materials, depths and densities.
And you should have the compaction already. You have the compaction already.
I do.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But again, I wasn't there to watch it. So and I so there's there is a there is a leap of faith on my part to be able to accept that. And I think by by observing the cores and seeing what that material is, that I can opine to that. The adequacy or or not.
Yep.
Right. I mean, if we come up and there's only six inches of gravel in there, we got.
There's a problem. Exactly.
So I, until I see that, I really can't give you a definite, you know, yes or no. So I think that's where we are on 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 those materials.
Okay, so.
And I'm fine, by the way, of having SW Cole do those, if that's who you.
Yeah, that's that's who I vote, that's who's done the whole project.
You're a very competent testing agency, so I'm fine with that. But I would like to witness it.
Isn't that who the town uses anyways? They wrote?
I don't.
It could be.
I don't know.
I don't know either.
I thought that was the company that they use for all the testing.
I don't know.
That was brought up at one of the meetings before in the minutes. At the ledge pack and that that was a company that was used by the town.
May have been used by the town, doesn't mean exclusively necessarily, but.
Oh, no. But what I'm saying is if they've been used by the town, then you must think they're fairly competent and.
Yeah.
Oh, that's.
SW Cole has an excellent reputation.
As do I.
Yes.
They're a very competent firm, so I'm fine with that.
So just so I could do a quick kind of a gather up what what I got so far, since I got a lot of scribbled notes here. We're going to make sure that you get the sieve analysis on the ledge pack so that we understand.
If I if I don't have it, yes.
Yeah, okay. You're going to jump in, do three cores to.
As soon as they can possibly do them.
Yeah, okay, excellent.
React very quickly.
And notify Dana so that.
He'll be there.
Yep. The AOT permit, so I know that you have reapplied now.
That is 90% complete. We had it as a meeting with them before I left on vacation. I mentioned I had a discussion with Ridge Mark. I went down there on the Wednesday, I believe, the day after the meeting. And we went over some final issues. He wanted some a test pit dug in the area where a rain garden would be, and that has been done. We have five-foot seasonal water table and the column of water he put in, it just disappeared. So all they need to do is compute that to make the size of the rain garden. Rain gardens aren't a big deal to build. They're relatively easy.
Yep. Okay.
And that should be all, I think, famous last words, that Phase Two should need. That's why I just wanted to deal with that first. And then we'll come back and we'll talk about Phase Three and what's required at that point. Because my game is to try to get this resolved so this this family can move in. That's my major concern.
Mr. Chairman, can I just point out one thing unless you want to finish?
Yeah, no, I just had one more comment is that my understanding was to is that this third house was permitted to be constructed to a weather tight only.
In subsequent.
I'll let Randy go on that.
Yeah, I believe, and John is here as well, that we were allowed to complete complete it. So it wasn't left in an unfinished stage, but we could not get a certificate of occupancy until this board said it was okay.
Okay.
So we didn't hold up construction.
So John's coming up. John Dever, code official. Yes, the subsequent discussions was that they were going to be allowed to continue to construct the house to the point of finish, but that they had the applicant had to satisfy all the requirements of the board with acquisition of the alteration of terrain permit, bonding, any of the other testing, all of that. So that all that would be in line when they're ready for a CO or, you know, as far as as we can get, but it's got to be. We have to meet those requirements. Okay.
Yep.
What exactly are the requirements that we're looking at?
The minimum, at a minimum, in my letter to to the applicant and to that was the acquisition of the alteration of terrain permit. Leashing of all the design submissions, reviews and testing of site improvements, the bonding. So essentially, get caught up to where he needs to be.
But is there anything beyond the bonding and the AOT?
My letter was not 100% specific because I would have gone on for pages.
Okay.
All right. So the planner has, you know, this, this is, there's a whole list of things that need to be done. And those, that's where we're at with that. When I'm, when she tells me that we're satisfied, I'm going to go. So at this point. The word would, it has to be brought up to date where he should be by now for this. Okay.
That was quite clear in your letter.
Okay, so Jessica, you you were going to add something here.
So I just wanted to clarify some things. I'm just going to read this section out of the covenants. And this has to do with being able to sell lots and what needs to be provided and what for these covenants to be released. And it's to furnish security in the amount acceptable to the planning board for completion of subdivision improvements remaining to be completed. So by submitting a bond that only includes the road is not what it states in these covenants. It's all, it's the complete subdivision improvements remaining to be completed. So that just doesn't include just the road.
What else does it include?
So, so that leads.
Dumb question, please.
Hold on a second. So that leads me to a discussion with the town engineer as to do you know what's left? And the answer is probably no, because you're new to the project. So the question is, does some sort of punch list needs to be created? Does some sort of list of these are the items that need to be completed? And then an estimate gets created from that. There's your bond.
Well.
I mean, that's what I'm, that's how I understand this.
AOT permit, which will probably require the rain garden, which we think it will. That should be it is because the grass is growing. We've mowed it. John's been out there, seen it. It's been mowed all last summer. It's stable. There is no washing of the top soil at all. But, you know, in a couple of days, you can be able to see all that because the snow is about to go. Well, most of it's.
We hope.
Most, yeah. Well, most of it, the snow is out of there now, but you can't see all of it. And so that would be the only thing. I mean, we've maintained the first section of the phase. And you know, if there's any crack appeared after eight years, we crack sealed it. And, you know, we've been proactive to maintain the road.
Yeah. And until I until I get out, the snow cover's gone, and I can get out there and take a look at it and compare it to your drawings that were approved by the board, I can't create that list. But certainly, you're saying this rain garden with AOT, that's something that's going to have to be in there and be, you know, secure.
Sure.
Under the security, right?
And that's why I suggested, or actually adopted Dana's suggestion of 75, that the estimate was 50, and just in case other things come up, let's put another $25,000 in there. And I further suggested if something does come up, come back and we'll talk about increasing that bond. But we don't think that we think that the 75 is too high, and it's going to be more than enough to do these few things, the core samples, the top coat for one and two, and a rain garden.
Mr. Chairman, can we get maybe an opinion from the town engineer if he thinks that that might be sufficient?
Yeah.
So we can come to some conclusion tonight to help you move forward with something.
That'd be great.
So a couple of points. I'm going to back step a little bit. I, late this afternoon, this afternoon, I received an estimate from G M I Asphalt, which is less than what the number that I provided in my estimate to do the top coat and tack coat. I'm not trying to be a little bitter. That's not what the town wants. I'm here to protect the town. I mean, my job is to help protect the town. So yes, I am higher than than G M I. And then I don't know what else is there. I mean, a rain garden. There may be some some edging to do. There may be some, I don't know, driveway blending. I just don't know what else is is needed out there. My estimate was around 50. He's got observation, right? Somebody's got to go out there and verify that this was actually done in accordance with with the agreement and approvals and then whatever else. So if it's 75, I mean, that's another 20, $25,000 on top. And until we know if there's anything more than that, and and as I I heard attorney Walker say, that if there is something beyond 75 that needs to be done, they would come back and adjust the board. So I think we are comfortable with, I would be comfortable with a $75,000 bond to start with here. And if, you know, when the snow melts, we get out there, or if there's six inches of gravel and not 12, we'll be back to talk about.
And I'll be jumping off a bridge.
So a nice low one down the road.
But one thing, Dana, is G M I does for in for years has done all the towns paving.
Yeah, no, I I actually had them do an estimate for my neighborhood. And it was for a lot less than what you're having done, and it was a lot more money. So I, again, I don't know what kind of arrangements you have with them or.
I called up and I said, I need a wear cost one inch thick compacted.
I just, again, my job is is to protect the town against, if the town had to, if you did go jump off that bridge and there wasn't.
That's right.
Finish.
Yeah.
The subdivision, the town would be on the hook to to do that as an obligation to the residents. And so I want to make sure that there's enough money that's there for them to go hire somebody, right, to come do this work.
And if anything, G M I being lower, such as just that there's more fluff in the in the number, you know, actually, if something else comes up, the G M I number is lower. So that should have.
You're better off that way, though.
Exactly. Oh, yeah, always the case.
I just want to protect the town, make sure there's enough.
As do we.
And the price, the price of mixes, you know, going through the roof, it's, no.
Bill went down.
They're holding this number for 14 days, which I think is amazing.
Yeah, well, in one place it says 14.
14 days, but.
One says 14, one says 30. I'll go with the 14.
Well, I just talked to a paving company and they're starting next week.
Yeah.
And to save the town time and another meeting, why don't you just say the 75,000? Plus, if there's any other costs occurred above and beyond, add it in now. Why why waste another meeting? In the meantime, we've got a family that has a child that is totally handicapped. It's going to be craned everywhere he's go, in and out of bed, in and out of the tub. But they're waiting to get into this house, and we're bickering over something that was passed. And then somebody's saying it shouldn't have been passed. We can go about that all night long. In the meantime, why don't we just save some time and just put something in there saying anything occurred? In the meantime, why don't we just save some time and just put something in there saying anything occurred above 75,000? He will take responsibility for, save a meeting and get these people with their handicapped child in their house. We did give a permit to build a house. Granted, I can't vote on this stuff, but I can express my opinion. And I've had handicapped children in my family. And I would not want to be in the predicament that they're rent, having to rent. Put yourself in their shoes. So let's stop wasting time. Add something in that gets us squared away, so we don't have another meeting. And let's get this family moved into their house, so they can start taking care of their children. From what I understand, it too is there in their 60s. I don't know about you, but I'm in my 60s, and I wouldn't want to be picking a kid in and out of a tub with a crane or in bed at the age of 60 years old. Just my opinion.
If I could just jump in on, just for a quick sec, I think that everything that we've suggested we can do will be done, because the bond will guarantee it with the one exception to the AOT permit. We may not get that back by the time the house is complete, and that is a procedural issue. I know we've had issues with the state on a number of permits, because they're backlogged and working hard. If the board wants to say that the, you know, they won't permit a substantive occupancy to be issued until that's obtained, so be it. We would hope that since there's already two people that are in the other two houses, one more won't make a difference to clear the decks. I just asked the question, but obviously up to the board as to how you want to handle that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you 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 understand the situation that we've been put in here.
Fully understand. We're trying to use, go to path forward to get us back on track.
And I respect, you know, respect the passion, Lee, you know, but we also have to keep in mind that we're setting precedents. Every time we make a decision, we're setting precedents that somebody can break the rules and we'll just say, ah, you know, don't worry about it. So it it's, it's kind of got to be handled delicately and carefully and
I'm not saying breaking the rules is right. What I'm saying is, instead of having another meeting to go above the 75, just put it in, put it in now, just make a comment in there now that if it goes above 75, he'll agree to go and take out the extra. If it's an extra 10, extra 12, that he'll cover it. That's what, that is what the main concern is right now, is whether it's going to be covered.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So to the comment about not having the AOT permit in place before he gets the CO, that's included in the building inspector's stop work order. And it's not up to the board to decide whether or not the AOT permit is in place before he can start or continue working. It's up to the building inspector as his authority as the building inspector to either allow or to put a stop work order on site development. Maybe he might want to speak more to that.
I do want to speak to that. I want to, you know, we, I, my philosophy of working on enforcement cases, if we're making progress towards a resolution, that I'm willing to work with the applicant. That's the reason that the house is in construction now. I could have said stop a month ago, or over a month ago, in January, and the people wouldn't be in the one house, and this, this would still be sitting as a shell with no roof. I don't want to do that. You know, the other, because these are innocent parties to this.
I'm agreeing with you.
So, right, and that, and that, so as we go along, if if the AOT has been submitted and the CO comes up, I know that it's, it's, it's like giving me the plans, you know, you could go forward. So I have been willing to negotiate with the applicant through all of this and to make concessions, so that we minimize the impact on the innocent parties involved. And I continue to do that. I I'm not the that guy that just doesn't. If I'm saying absolutely no and refusing to flex, then there's a real, real good reason. But I I have, I feel that I've been reasonable so far. Very reasonable so far, and had attempted to work with them. We've had an open line of car, you know, conversation. So if we get down to that point where oh, the AOT submitted to DES, I got no control over DES, but I know they got it in their hands, and it's going to be addressed. I'm fine, you know, I I'm, I'm this changes on a daily basis, I I can roll the changes. But I have no desire to keep people out of their home because of someone else's mistake, as long as it's safe for them to be there, which there should be no reason not to.
So Chairman, everything that I've heard, it seems like there's a clear path in this problem. I mean, they've offered to cover, you know, what the covenants were granted for, what what original for. The AOT is out of our hands. That's not our decision. That's John.
Yeah, once it's submitted. Yeah, it's our, you know, we
Once it's submitted.
We have to require that.
That's, well, that's Scott's, that's back to Scott. That's not everybody's working to get this done. So there's a, there is a clear path. The money's going to be there, takes care of the covenant, so the covenant's going to be removed. John, as long as he's got the AOT and process that he's comfortable with, that he won't, you know, hold up the occupancy. So what it comes down to is just us saying, okay, the 75,000 is good enough to take care of the to set the word.
And the shark.
The encumbrance, whatever they were there, takes care of that, and we'll let them move on. It 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 seems, it seems pretty simple to me.
The question was, I think, at one point there, that were there other things other than the AOT?
Well, he's going to take care of the, the town engineer is going to take care of the other things. So you had the, you had the AOT, which is now in John's, but it's not, it's, it's out of our hands. So John's on the AOT, he's on the other issues, and Scott's on the $75,000 to have the covenants removed. There's the word.
But I haven't heard anyone say definitively that it's only the AOT and the top course of the binder that's required. Is that it?
You haven't heard what?
We we don't know that for a fact, that that's what it's limited to.
Don't know.
It's the point. Right, and and my letter to him was these and anything else that applies. So there, the planner suggested that there be a concrete worklist established within the next day of all the items that need to be addressed. We're, we're at a point here. The board may or may not feel that they can at least go forward, so we can get this moving and work out the any other, we're not going to, we don't know what's out there in the ground, because the engineer hasn't been out there.
And he should be able to see that very soon.
Right, yeah. Soon, but there there's, we should end up with a list, which is what the planner has said.
So this list will come from the town engineer.
There isn't a, there isn't a hidden list somewhere else. He's going to go out and he's going to say, yeah, everything is good, or this is bad.
Or this needs to be done.
Or that needs to be done. So that, so, so Scott's putting up $75,000 to cover what he, what he knows he's going out there for. And if he sees something else, Scott's going to put up more money. So if you conditionally move this along. I mean, it's, the big thing is it is the covenants. That's, that's, that's where, that's where it went over the edge, was the covenants. Now the $75,000 is putting it back on the road. And obviously, all these things have to be finished before John will do the CO. So it's like, it's, it's just trying to get done, and and now we're holding it back.
So I don't think we're, I don't think we're holding anything back.
It's just, it's just the right words, and we can, we can put it to bed.
I don't see we're holding
No, 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 we're right. This is why we're here. That's what I'm saying.
Put it all in focus and get it done.
There's a clear path.
Roger, how about, how about thinking it from another point of view, which is, how can we conditionally approve it?
That's what I'm getting at.
With the coordination between John, Mr. Huff, the planner, and the chairman. You know, to me, I'd be willing to vote on that and let them make the final decision. Um, with the applicant, obviously.
And that's, and that's
I'm game with that.
You know, I mean, I think what we're, we're trying to do the right thing, but we want to deal, we want to wrap this up, so we don't set a bad precedent. That's the main thing.
Moving to the future, I want to bring up one more thing. And I think many of you that have been here for a long time, I have asked for the a file be made for every lot that's been created when we do a subdivision. And the conditions of the subdivision put in each one of those lots. That way, I forgot about it. John didn't seem to know about it. It's, it's an oversight, and I know it's happened on other projects where people didn't know it, like across from my house on House Hill, a guy dug a foundation, put it in there, and it was in the wrong spot. He had to tear a foundation out. So this would eliminate some of these things for everybody. And I just think it would be a good practice.
Well, I think
And 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 I'm, I'm victim to it. You know?
Where this started, I think, Scott, was when we you and I forget someone else wanted to do a subdivision without the bond, but you were willing to give up your right to sell the lots until the conditions came through.
That's what this covenant that Roger was mentioning. That's the covenant. So, but that would be put in the each land lot file.
In other words, this was a new process, and somehow this didn't really mesh well. Okay? So I guess what we need to do is make sure either we insist on the bonds, or we have some other method of doing it.
And I don't have a problem with the bond.
Yeah.
You know, and
So, uh, so just to get kind of back onto this specific situation right here. So Jessica, is it feasible that we can have a motion to release the covenants on those lots with conditions?
Um, let me just pull up that release. So I don't see a problem with releasing. So what exactly are the lots that are listed in Phase Two? Could you, you're, you're going to bond Phase Two. Bond's done, you're going to bond Phase Two, and you're going to leave Phase Three still in effect under these covenants?
Correct. Yes, exactly. And when we get the AOT permit, so I know what's entailed over there, because I do not know yet, then I can get that and have a sense of what's needs to happen.
Okay. Right.
And there were four lots in Phase Two that were asking to be released, and I circulated a a release of covenant form, but I did give Jessica a new one about two hours ago, which you probably haven't seen. The only difference is there were four lots in Phase Two, and I said there were six, seven, and eight. The planning board subdivided eight into two. So the new one, all it does is add that fourth lot, but it's just the fourth lot in Phase Two. And and again, I'll give you one, you can just pass these around if you want. I only had three, and I gave Jessica three, but the goal is to just release the Phase Two lots, which there are four, not three.
So so if there were to be a a motion, as I discussed, and these are the conditions, as as I kind of understand, that would be to obtain an AOT permit, which we've already discussed. John will work with you on that. Uh, the approval of the base and the base course of pavement by Dana. And that includes the Civ Analysis Review, as well as the resulting of the coring. Final wear coat installed. Right?
Well, that doesn't have to be installed. You're bonded for that. I probably would wait until the excavators stop moving around in there to put the wear course down. That would make sense.
Okay.
Because if you have an oops in the asphalt.
Right, I would agree with that. Saw that on my
And then I just, I kind of was trying to figure out how to phrase this correctly, but it's probably not phrased correctly, but and and whatever else may be determined to be needed by Dana.
I think that's excellent.
And I just in adding the caveat that you would return in good faith to expand upon that bond if it was so determined as needed. Does that make sense to everybody?
What I've been saying, yes.
And I So can we, can can we call that a motion?
Yes.
Say it again.
So move.
One more thing, you should probably appoint an alternate.
Fortunately, the recording has it.
What's that?
We probably should appoint an alternate to replace me.
Uh, yes, so Lee?
Yes.
Okay.
That you can vote.
All right, so, so I just want to point out that the town attorney is going to have to review this release. But just to make sure, just clarifying that, just to make sure that that
Any suggested changes, I'm, I'm sure that if there are, they're usually reasonable, and we wouldn't have a problem. The concept is solid, but
Yeah, yeah. And obviously, the legality of that motion that was just made. Want to make sure that that's I'm okay with that. You're, you're an attorney, you'd know.
I I thought you did an excellent job. And, you know, I just say I go before a lot of boards and common sense invariably prevails. People get the intent, and even if the wording isn't exactly right, as long as you get there, that's the main thing.
However, it's uncommon today to find common sense.
Okay, so, uh, so that, I guess, is a, we'll, we'll say that I made that motion.
Yeah.
So
I'll gladly second it.
Seconded by Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
That doesn't have to be opened up.
No, no. No, no hearing, none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
You'll be, you'll be in touch with me.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep in touch with each other.
I will call you tomorrow after, and once I schedule something and make sure it's good with you.
I'll let the board know.
If you want to call me, then I would even be happy to go out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Scott is back to the table.
Now I'm back out.
And you're back out. But thanks for your brief participation. Okay, so thank you, everyone, for being patient through that. So, next on the agenda, completeness review of application, Changing Seasons Engineering LLC, agent for Alton Bay Christian Conference Center, and this is for the final major site plan. It's 2205. All right, so first, we need to review this for and, oh, there's an awful lot of requests for waiver, so we've got to go through those.
It's kind of traditional for the poor camp crowd, because it's such an expanse.
Is there anything different in these waivers from the previous ones that we, and when we mentioned them? Because I was reading through the the minutes that you
I don't think there's any new ones. Some of them may have dropped out, because we made changes to the plans that then didn't need them anymore.
So the waivers requested are from Section 4.02 and Ren F, and then the following 4, 7, 9, 11, 12, 23, 24, 26, and 36. Names and addresses of abutting landowners, boundary survey, topography shown in two-foot contour intervals, elevation views of each side of the building, general floor plan, approximate location of driveways and or roads, wells, septic systems within 200 feet of the site, approximate location of buildings on abutting properties within 200 feet of the site, and location of shoreland protection, overlay district, and location and type of drainage system elements.
That was my only question, because I, I don't know the layout of the land. Roger, Roger has slept on it, walked on it.
Well, I, I just have a question. I I look at all these things you're waving. Seems like those are all things you have right there on your desk, all the answers to these waivers.
I mean, you know, names and addresses of abutting landowners, we just put a note on there that the list of abutters is in the file, because the list of abutters is ridiculously long.
Can't fit it on the map.
Get on there. I mean, you could, it's just, yeah. Um, it's not really an official boundary survey. We don't have a surveyor stamp on the plans.
Oh, that's not a real survey.
It's the one that we used from the previous plan.
Right, that they, remember, they had a previous survey document that they'd worked off of, but they were not this they couldn't have that stamp still on there, because
No, it was a survey that was done by Turner.
Turner, okay.
But you can't just use it?
Well, you can, but you have to, you have to get their written permission.
Right, because they, they own it still.
At that time, we, we didn't.
Which we did look into, but it gets complicated.
Yeah, we thought we could use it, because it was, it was a plan that we had purchased.
General floor plans, because you don't know the, what it's going to be.
Yeah, we don't, those people will be coming in individually to Yeah, we don't know. Those people will be coming in individually to, to get their plan approved.
You have, you have all sorts of restrictions as to.
Yeah, that should all be in the.
Size, look and all that. It's.
Height and the footprint and the buffer zones and.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify, um, a couple of the waivers with Stephanie?
Yep.
So in my planner review, I listed, uh, twenty-six and thirty-six, but those were left over from design review.
Right.
Those aren't in the current, the current waiver list only ends it, it ends at twenty-four.
Yep. Because the shoreline protection overlay district should now be shown on there and, um, I think the drainage system too. I.
Yeah, I saw that. The water lines and stuff on that. So.
Right. So that should all, those ones I think are the ones that I got rid of on the new application because I should have put them on the plans.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that for the board.
Sure.
As well.
Yeah, that two hundred fifty shoreline line is on there now.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver request four, seven, nine, eleven, twelve, twenty-three, twenty-four. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right.
Twenty-six and thirty-six?
Uh, those are now on the drawing.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, those didn't need to be on our list. So do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So now we move on to completeness. Jessica, you didn't see, I mean, you've got a lot of Y's here.
Yeah, really just, um, only included, uh, just sort of the standard notes to add, which are all listed under conditions precedent.
And I'll make a motion that we accept the case as P twenty-two oh five is complete.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So we've, uh, what's that?
I was just explaining what, that we couldn't discuss it until it was complete.
Yeah. So now we can discuss it. Yeah. So I, I mean, obviously you folks have been in front of us a couple of times now. So I think we're, we're pretty familiar with the, uh, what's going on here and, and, uh, you know, what you're proposing. And I think you've responded appropriately to any of our comments and, you know, certainly any of the, the planners' comments. I don't know if the board has anything else, uh, on this. No?
I think we're overdue on this.
I think we may be. All right. Well, I'd like to open it to the, the public then. It's the public. Anyone from the public want to speak to this? Awful quiet. Okay. Closing public. All right. Um, is there anything you guys wanted to add to?
Um, no, I, not necessarily. If you don't have any questions and you know what we're doing, then I think we're all set.
What? Make a motion. I have just a couple of things. One is pertains to the revision date on the plan. Uh, if you can just put the, the date that you revised.
So that's you want the original date to be from the design review?
Yeah, like kind of when you remove those other two plans and, you know, whatever, whatever dates this plan got revised, you would add the revision date and sort of just a brief explanation of what that revision was.
Okay. Do you want to go all the way back to ZDA or just plan?
Nope. Just, yeah, just since you've been at planning. That's the only thing that I didn't see that was on here.
And then these, in this conditions precedent, those notes will get added as well.
Whatever isn't on there. Yeah, I have listed whatever sort of the standard planning board notes.
Anything else?
You guys need to do active and substantial and substantial completion of improvements.
This is a tough one for that because the site is already here.
And you're waiting on three different people.
Right. So, yeah.
Waiting on three or two.
Well, it's three, three cottages. So.
The one that. How best to talk about that?
It's that kind of long one up on top of the plan there.
Outside of the.
Oh.
This one? Yes. No.
Next to it.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, no.
I thought that was, okay.
That's the one that was just, that was built last year.
Okay. That's one of the.
Yes.
So, uh, substantial, active or substantial development within twenty-four months to include.
So I think, so the Christian Conference Center isn't really here to discuss the actual building.
Right.
Of, of those cottages. They're here to just sort of amend the site plan in order to have the permission to do that.
Right. So that's why I'm saying the.
Yeah. So I mean, it could be just as simple as, um, you know, submitting the proper amount of plans in order for the chairman to sign it. You know, it could, you could go way back and that it doesn't really have much to do with the actual buildings.
And maybe stake them out for, you know, just put some grade stakes out there to show where they're going to be. I don't know if that's even necessary. But, because I know people like to run over grade stakes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a, an issue with it being as easy as having the proper number of documents for me to sign. I mean.
Yeah, let's leave it at that.
No. That's fine. And then obviously substantially complete will be CFO's on all of them. So whenever that may be.
My thought is that they'll, they'll probably go pretty quick. We, we don't allow anything to be under construction, um, starting Jan, July first until after the summer's over. So may get a start before summer on approval, but, uh, major building wouldn't start till fall. I wouldn't think.
Okay. Certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, yeah. Cause it's.
Okay.
When, whenever that may be, the CFO, I mean, it could be four years from now.
The CFO?
CFO. Certificate of occupancy.
I just thought of it as a CEO. Got lost.
He, he adds the extra letter.
That's confusing. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
Too many letters.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, case P twenty-two, I will move.
Oh, five.
Oh, five. P twenty-two dash oh five. I'm sorry. To approve the plan as presented with the waivers that have been waived and the substantial completion will be the appropriate number of plans to be signed by the chairman as well as the C of O. And conditions precedent and subsequent conditions. I think that does it.
Does.
Okay.
Do we have second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're all set. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
I know it's always a challenge when we come in.
We appreciate it. Well, this one was really pretty easy.
How many copies do you need?
Five copies.
Five, yeah. Full, full, full size.
And one eleven by seventeen, right?
No, we already have one.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't usually, the, the regulations don't require a small plan, just the five large plans.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Have a good night. Take it easy.
So next case, P twenty-two oh three, Norway Plains Agent for Keith Dubia, Piper Dubi LLC, final major site plan. Contractors yard and landscape business, self-storage facility. You running solo tonight?
With the permission of this board, uh, the applicant was hoping I could put him on speakerphone, if that's okay. He, just so he can hear what's going on. If the board has a problem with that, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Yeah, you can use one of the other microphones and kind of.
That way he'll be recording.
Yeah. That's fine.
Thank you.
You're not a tech, you're not.
Not like in Florida with a drink.
I don't know if he has a drink in his hands.
He's not going to deny the Florida part.
Hi Keith, uh, this is Scott from Norway Plains. You're on speakerphone with the Alton Planning Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, uh, start waivers.
No way. Yeah.
Waivers. Holy mackerel. All right. So, uh, so it's a review for completeness. Jessica, you didn't, uh, nothing jumped out?
There was, so it's not really for completeness. You guys can do completeness first and then I can discuss it after.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, hearing no reason to not call this complete in case P twenty-two dash zero three, I'll move to accept the plan as complete. Application is complete. Prefer me.
We have second?
Second.
Seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, um, since you were here last, what kind of excitement did you have?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, since our last meeting, which was in February, um, we have modified the, uh, site plan to address the NHDOT driveway comments from District Three. More specifically, uh, we rearranged the driveway such that it's become a shared, a fully shared driveway with the abutting lot as was depicted on the original subdivision plan. Um, so that was a requirement, uh, that the District Three required. That those plans, the plans have been changed to reflect that. We've also, um, I think just added a landscaping plan to the plan set. Had not been previously shown to the board, but we had shown plantings, but it wasn't an official landscaping plan. So we just added that sheet to the plan set, um, where we denoted, uh, the location of proposed, uh, trees for screening, um, towards the rear of the property, uh, to address the abutters, the back of the lot. We plant, we're depicting, uh, some trees to be planted along the westwardly edge of the longer self-storage building to sort of break up the facade of the building. Uh, we've also added, uh, some, a row of, uh, shrubs to delineate the difference between the contractor's storage yard and the access to the rear of the property where the self-storage facility is going to be. And lastly, we added some additional plantings along the, uh, front, uh, where the old driveway is sort of being removed out of the, of the scheme. Those have been the changes to the site plan, um, since we've been to this board.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a comment?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, um, there is an issue with the drip edge of the storage buildings to the left side of the property.
Right.
Being within the setback.
I, I saw that, uh, Jessica, and that drip edge is, is merely a stone edge to allow this, from when the water comes off the roof to splash. It's not a drainage feature. Uh, we could replace it with bark mulch. It doesn't have to be stone. It was, so it's not a, a stormwater management system. It's a simply there to help avoid water from splashing back on the building.
It won't hurt the stormwater though. I, I think the stone would be a better feature because it won't float away under heavy rain conditions.
Yep. It was just a comment that was given to me by the code official. You know, we both noticed that that was indicated as being within the setback. I just wanted to address that.
Yeah. And that's been done other places, uh, within the setback, the stone.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think that's too uncommon. It's still on your property. It's not a permanent structure being built. So like it could always be removed and replaced. And certainly a better solution than bark mulch that will.
Yeah. Be great to put a fabric underneath it so the weeds won't come up through it and stuff.
And the, just a clarification, the, the drive coming in. So there's a section that is paved and then at what point does it change over to?
Right. The Department of, excuse me, the Department of Transportation requested a fifteen-foot paved apron. Uh, the adjoining residential lot is already paved, so we are proposing just to, to feather in fifteen feet into, uh, that's part of this driveway expansion. This is denoted as a little bit of a finger of gray area. I know, um, just right fifteen, just off the, between the edge of pavement and the right of way is about fifteen feet. It's just a little sliver of asphalt that'd be placed there. The rest of the, uh, driveway onto, uh, the applicant's, uh, lot is all to be gravelled. At this time, the only thing that's being paved is the fifteen-foot paved apron as a request of the DOT.
I know that DOT was actually onsite working, working with Keith at, at some point. So.
That's correct. It was, there was.
Been gone over many times.
It's a meeting with, uh, members of District Six and the applicant onsite, uh, with, with. Just three. I'm sorry. Too many District Six.
Well, there must have been two guys.
District Three. Um, yeah, there was a meeting onsite with spray paint and, uh, and, uh, it was all resolved to exactly what they wanted. Our surveyors located it and we drafted it and that's what DOT has issued the permit based upon those approved plans.
I saw, I saw the paint. I was there.
Is there any reason why you haven't elected to pave? You know, I can see the contractor, you had not been paved, but the rest of the stuff?
There has been discussion amongst the applicant about paving it, but at this time he didn't want to, uh, have that as part of his approval. All of our stormwater management design assumes as if it was pavement. So.
Yeah, well, gravel is now considered impermeable.
That's right. So at, at the time that he wishes to, he would work with the, the town on, uh, if he needs a building permit to pave it or not. But at this time, we're proposing gravel.
So I've also noticed that your lighting plan has not taken into account any lighting at all in the contractor yard area.
That's, that's correct. Um, he's, it's really a, just during the daytime, the guys come up. Their employees as part of his landscaping company, they come in, you know, and they leave and, uh, the applicant didn't really feel like he needed to illuminate that area. We are illuminating out back where it's open to, uh, the general public or the renters. That's the, why there are no luminants in the contractor's storage yard area.
Would they be needed in the winter for plowing?
I think headlights or the pickup trucks. I mean, it's, you know, it's area that they need highly illuminated.
Is there anything that delineates the right-hand side of that drive as you go to the storage units from the wetlands? I mean, would, yeah, go. storage units from the wetlands? I mean, would, yeah, going up there, is there?
There's, there's an earthen berm.
There is, okay. I just tried to find that in here.
Yeah, there's a detail in the package and it's a note that calls it out as an earthen berm. And that's primarily not only to help keep the vehicles on the traveled way, but also to direct the stormwater along the edge of that to the sediment four bay before going into the stormwater practice.
Good, thank you. Yeah, there I see the note now. All right. All right.
Snowmobile Trail, as they have addressed all the butters for moving the snow machine trail for.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's between the Snowmobile Trail Association and the landowners. The applicant think, you know, we've kind of provided some area there. He could possibly continue to keep it on his property. They may have to shift it over to the abutting lot and so they have to get a permission from the abutting lot owners.
I think the abutting lot owner was here. And expressed, yeah, expressed that, you know, they didn't have too much of an issue with that.
Yellow.
I thought I shut it off.
Answering it too. Speakerphone. So was the board have any other questions or?
We basically covered it all pretty much before.
I'd like to open, you got anything else?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anybody from the public speak to this? Seeing none? Right, closing public. Now you have something.
Okay, so I just wanted to have a brief discussion regarding the conversations we've had with with a few other site plans, the major site plans that included maintenance manuals. And so we had talked about having the site plan recorded at the registry. Well, you were on vacation, so. So that's sort of what the board had come up with. So through some further conversations, actually with Randy Tatro over at Norway Plains and calling the registry, Bellk County Registry Deeds, they actually no longer record site plans.
Guess that answered that question, huh?
So, one, we'd have to update that in our site plan regs. So, two, the question now comes into play is, you know, do we have this? Maybe we should have the notice of decision. Maybe the notice of decision could be recorded just so that there's some some tie, ties to that other than, you know, recording this entire maintenance manual. It's up to, you know.
There has to be someplace that if, if for sake, it changes hands, the new person knows the stuff.
Yeah, I think what you said, Jess, is good. Record that, you know, this has been approved and the site, the maintenance manual is on file at the Alton Planning Office.
Right, because there's a note on the site plan that refers to any, you know, current or future owners are, you know, held to the maintenance manual, the requirements, recording, whatnot. You know, this is, there's some verbiage that we had added. But we thought maybe recording the site plan would be a good idea, but that no longer can take place, so. I will change condition precedent number six. I'll just delete that out entirely. Does that references recording the site plan?
Number that again is six.
Conditions precedent number six.
So you should probably get some type of form letter drafted up for the future. So once we do this, needles say they won't do that again, so we'll have something stock to record at the registry.
Yep, yeah, as we do our updates to the site plan regs, which is next. We'll definitely address that and sort of make this more prominent, you know, that these really need to be addressed. I don't know how much in the past that these maintenance manuals have been really, you know, brought to light and talked about and made sure that they get followed. I'm not sure, but I feel like it's very important.
Yeah, it should be. But we'll have to address it through the site regs in.
Yeah.
Figure out how we're gonna do that.
Okay. And then you guys should talk about active and substantial development and substantial completion of improvements.
Well, that, that's Scott's question. What do you feel? Are you gonna start this prop presently or what, what do you need for time to get the ball rolling here?
Well, the contractor's storage yard is already in effect, so. But it is my understanding that Mr. Doobie is planning on starting to, like, start delineating between the contractor's storage yard and improving the gravels around the edge, work on the stormwater management system first, get that installed. And then prepping pad areas for the building.
Twenty-four?
I would say within the next two years. Does that sound appropriate, Mr. Keith?
What's that to get started?
Yeah, two years.
Want to get started right away?
Well, within two years.
Within two years, let me rephrase that. Yes, within.
You don't have to wait two years.
I hope everything holds up as far as financial goes with the market and everything. So I'd hope and pray.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
So, so. What's that?
Twenty-four months.
Twenty-four months in, we'll say for the establishment and completion of the drainage management or stormwater management system as substantial start.
If that's in there, he's well vested at that point.
Has he put a minimum impact in for the login yet?
I, most of the trees have been cleared, except for where the self-storage is. He'll have to file a letter of intent with the town if it's more than whatever the requirement is.
Right, but where it's in a wet area, has he filed a minimum impact with the state?
I think the tree cutting in the, in the jurisdiction of wetland area was not, you know, was done by force practice. That's all been done. He's not proposing any of that work.
Yeah, but he don't have to log anymore out for the.
No, not, not, not with, not within jurisdiction of wetlands. No, no, all that works done.
I took, the only reason I'm asking is I wanted to make sure that he did get one if he hadn't got one. So that he don't run into some complication.
And then the substantial completion of the improvements would, would be, I think, the final CFO signed off by Mr. Dever.
Okay, and again, is the board going to have Town Engineer go out and do construction observations like they did with the other projects?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I will contact Mike Vignali. He's the one working on this one. Okay.
Great, entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept case P twenty-two oh three. And where are we? We have standard precedent. And we're looking at completion date of approximately twenty-four months.
So start, start date within twenty-four months.
Yeah.
And the drainage system.
As, yeah, signifying that substantial start.
We should probably, on conditions present, delete item six.
Six on conditions present precedent.
Yes, and are we gonna rewrite that?
Where, where does it gonna record the notice of decision?
Okay.
So I don't know if that really needs to be just rewritten or.
Does that have to be on the sheet or not?
On, on the, the plan?
Yeah.
I think, I think as long as it's on, it should be referenced on the drawing.
Okay.
Is it? No, 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 the, the fact that there is a stormwater management plan. So, so what, what we're gonna do is is make sure the decision is recorded so that it's always on record that there is a stormwater management plan.
And it's stored at the town hall.
And it's, yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right, any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We appreciate you working with the town.
Now we can have that umbrella drink.
You say thank you for the umbrella drink.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
I need your umbrella when you go out.
Is it raining out?
It was raining when I came in. At least in East Alton. But we're supposed to get two to four inches tonight. Yeah.
I thought trace to two inches. Trace. I'm going with me.
Those of us who live in the high elevations.
All right, so next on the get agenda, case P twenty-two oh eight, Varney Engineering agent for Saco hyphen Alton One LLC. This is for a minor site plan review map thirty-two lot fifty to obtain multifamily structural approval with one new unit in the garage on the second floor.
I thought we used to backboard. Okay, I'll shut up.
It's got just stolen.
Okay.
So. So we have no request for waivers. So review for completeness, Jessica, was it?
So there's one, so let's go to the first page of the planner review. So I just want to confirm that I did receive both, both signatures for both of the owners of the company. And according to the site plan regulations, a recrea- a recreation area for a multifamily residential development is a requirement. So I feel like maybe you can talk to Mr. Varney as to maybe he has a good reason as to why that's not appropriate for this development and you should submit a formal waiver.
I'm, I'm a little confused because this was, that main building was a two-unit apartment for years and years. The barn was a two, a unit apartment. They had another one in between that connected the two and it's gone.
So they never formally had a site plan approval?
It may go before that. That's what I'm getting at.
Right, and maybe, again, you can sort of clarify that with Mr. Varney because he explained it really well in some emails that went back and forth between John and I as to what the reasoning was for the application.
There's actually also another commercials on the first floor or apartment on the second floor. Just saying.
Yeah, I'd be honest, I struggled with this whole thing because it's, it's a it is an existing non-conforming. So, I mean, it doesn't meet setbacks. The, 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 the structure on the property, the main structure on the property.
Yeah.
And it is a change in use as far as I can tell.
I wouldn't agree with that.
Right, because it was at one point in existing multifamily.
Yeah.
Because it included, if you look at the site plan, I, that section where I highlighted, so that was all one structure at one point.
The connecting unit burned, connecting section.
So it really was.
So how is it recorded on the tax card? I mean, how's it, how's it recognized by the town right now?
Is that duplex, just the house?
Well, why it wasn't the barn ever included? Because I've been in that apartment in the commercial space many, many times.
Because I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself and just make sure you speak into the mic?
Colin Hart.
Can I introduce what we're doing?
Yes, before, yeah.
Yeah.
So that was a question of completeness. I don't want to go too deep into what we were.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. I apologize.
Okay, Tom Vani, Vani Engineering and Colin Hart is next to me. He bought the property recently.
Have we accepted this yet?
He's, yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about the waiver. I didn't apply for a waiver. I applied for a minimum or minor site plan application. That's not on the checklist. It's not on site plan rules. That's for a major application.
Okay.
That's how I didn't come up with recreation at all. Otherwise, I could have added something there, but I that never tripped a wire with me at all. It's not required for a minus site plan application.
All right, so just to keep, and I apologize, I started leading everybody astray here, but we need to get back on track to approve this for as complete as submitted, so I think we need to decide whether that's the case and everybody feels appropriate, I will entertain a motion.
So can I just, can I, I'm gonna beat a dead horse. The, so the rec, the regulation that requires this recreation area, so then maybe a minor site plan isn't the proper application. If multifamilies require recreation areas, and if that is not listed on a minor site plan, it's listed on the major site plan requirements, then maybe this isn't the right application. I don't, I don't, that's just my opinion. How do you waive that? Because that's a, that's a requirement of a multifamily.
But it's an existing multifamily. That's I, I don't know. I don't know what to say.
Oh, it's, it's right in the minor site plan, site plan regulations, so. It's for above a two-unit duplex, so multifamily, that's what it is, three units. No principal buildings or accessory buildings less than seven hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area size. His apartment is seven hundred and fifty square feet or less, I believe. That's new. So that puts us into minors. So if we are over seven hundred and fifty, we'd be into a major. And then it goes through the requirements of what's required and we've met, we've met those requirements. It's existing buildings anyway. It's, it's a three unit. It's, it's not in the category of, of being a major site plan anyway, but to me, I would start out with minor, but when I read the language, that's what it is anyway.
So. What he's trying to do is make it a free unit. It's already a duplex and he wants to put an apartment up above the apartment, like Scott says, the apartment was there. I've been there.
Yeah, been there thirty years ago.
He came to me and said he needed a site plan. He had a, there was email with John Dever and said discussions needed a septic design, which was isn't, doesn't exist, okay, up until now. And site plan approval. And I looked at the rules, said, yeah, you need a site plan. You're above a duplex. He's remodeling and converting that, that barn area into an apartment. You need a site plan. That's why we're here. It's.
But it was previously an apartment, though, Tom.
But it was not legal. He, he wants to make this legal, okay, minimize it. He's a young guy. He's honest, decent. As far as I know, he's trying, he's from out of town.
We're not questioning that.
He's starting to do it the right way.
Yeah.
So.
I, I understand why you submitted a mi- a minor because of that square footage. That's where it really breaks down to, you know, whether you're submitting a minor or a major application, whether or not you're doing any, you know, work outside, you know, adding structures, things like that, you know, all that stuff comes into play. I just honestly, I, I don't know how to get around that, waiving that regulation if that's not included in a minor application.
Well, nobody would meet that requirement because it's not asked for, so you wouldn't submit a waiver.
But it's a requirement of a multifamily. But it's a requirement of a multifamily.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Right.
Of a major, major application.
Uh, well, a, a multifamily period, so, you know.
Right, it's not tied to a major or a minor application, it's just a regulation of multifamily.
The multifamily is three units or more, right? Because otherwise it's called a duplex and that falls under the residential.
Correct, right, that's why he's coming in for a site plan because it's multifamily.
What does the recreational aspect? Well, I mean, I'm not familiar with it at all.
The thing, I mean, it's.
Can we back up for just a second?
Yeah.
It's not a multifamily, you got a duplex and now he wants to put an apartment in the barn, they're separate, it's not a complete building.
Three units.
But there's supposed to be a connected building and and these once were.
Supposed to be and is are two different things. So you got a duplex and you got a, a single apartment. That's allowable.
As an accessory.
It's not.
It's not an accessory.
As traditional, as the, the traditional definition of accessory dwelling unit can only be allowed on a lot with, in a single family.
Okay.
But I think and and you know, you got to take into consideration, John is the code official, has determined that this is the proper application to apply for a multifamily even though it goes against our traditional, you know, three units in one building. So.
Going back to the recreational requirement. Clarify that at all?
Yes, please.
He didn't speak to this need for a recreation area. He just spoke towards whether or not it was considered a multifamily or not.
When we say, you mean, he needs a recre- I mean, a backyard, is that what we're looking for?
Well, I think the. It, I think it, what happened when it was originally drawn, if there was twenty units, there needs to be a recreation area.
Yeah.
But you needed a start point and it started at three.
Right.
So, so, but I, I think this is, in this particular situation, this is kind of a moot because conversation because really a submission of a waiver and with the fact that the lake, you could hit it with a rock, you know, kind of satisfies, yeah, there's recreation nearby.
Yeah, I, I think that's a legitimate.
So I think, I think in this case, you know, I, I think a waiver would be appropriate to get past that and I don't think you'd have any problem getting a waiver passed, you know, approved.
I'm gonna give you one right now, write one up here.
Sure, just something real basic. I have a notebook paper somewhere.
You're way ahead of them. It's even got lines on it.
Okay, so other than that, I, there were no other outstanding issues. So he's writing the waiver and so I think you guys could go forward with completeness.
Okay, so we got to handle the waiver first.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will, on case P twenty-two oh eight, I will move to accept the waiver of recreation space.
Okay, waiver for the need of it.
The need, right. Yeah.
So, okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, just as it looked like it's complete other than that, Mr. Chairman, you're good?
Yep.
Okay, case P twenty-two dash zero eight, I'll move to accept the plan as complete, the application as complete.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Bill. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Varney does write.
You gotta write it now, Tom, because.
Now you're up for presentation.
Sorry, you're gonna burn him out.
Doing that in pencil too? We can erase.
Engineers use pencils.
Okay, so I, we've already kind of, you know, moved into this a little bit and I guess I'm going to kind of reiterate my concerns that it is a duplex by record.
You want to pass that over?
And that it is a existing non-conforming lot. So I think that this actually has to go before the ZBA before we could see this. That's my opinion.
Wow, you're probably right.
Mark that on the calendar.
That one down.
Yeah, but, you know, by all means, the board, I'm, I'm.
No, I think you're right. It, it, it's obvious what the circumstances are, but we have to follow a pattern.
And the barn is just on the front of the setback line, so it's the actual two-unit apartment, the duplex, that's the non-conforming part.
Right, which makes the whole lot non-conforming, so I, you know, I think from a ZBA point of view, it shouldn't be that difficult of a decision.
What about division three?
Division three?
Yeah.
That's kind of what I was, I think I may, I don't know if I wrote it in there, but that was kind of my question of.
Yeah, I, I think we need to have them find out the, the, what is there for a permit.
Oh, I see.
So that part is with this part.
Yeah.
Roger, you're aware of that.
Yeah.
But there's other places he can put parking if, if that didn't work.
Yeah, so the parking, so.
But it's been that way for eons as well.
Yeah.
What?
Well, I mean, there was, there was a, Herbie was parked there for years.
The love bug, yeah.
The, the two parking spaces that are down further, they're not even on that property, huh?
No, they're part of the, no, that, that, those two parking spaces down there go with this property here. Even though the dockside people like to think they can use them, but they belong to this property here.
Okay, because it looks like the property line is.
Well, they're, they're in the state right away, but you know, the state could come by and say, I'm gonna widen that and those will go away. You know?
And so will dockside's porch.
Yeah.
I can ask a dumb question of the when I look at the parking design here in front of the garage with the apartment overhead, I sure wouldn't want to be backing out into Main Street on Route eleven.
Not that, at that intersection, that's crazy.
Exactly, so when I look at these photos, I see the cars parked in a totally different, much safer way. Is there any way to revamp the parking design so that you have a safety feature built in? I mean, could you have one side of the driveway where people park on? Anything but backing into Route eleven to me in the summertime would be sheer death knell.
That's what I tried to do, I can't put these rectangle parking spaces any other direction or whatever, there's no, there's no room, so they go in straight.
What about one, one side of the, of the, of the driveway there going up to where the proposed dumpster is? If, if you parked on just one side with, I mean, at least you could get in there, turn around so you're not on the road, at least when you're pulling back out, you're pulling on front.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, the other thing is, is you really do got to check with division three because
Right.
Division three is kind of like a bear and you can do stuff and all of a sudden you poke them, then they come and tell you, well, you can't do any of that anyway, you only have fifteen feet of drive.
Yeah.
All of that is supposed to be grass. So.
I've never messed with them.
It's no fun.
Even though this has been, you know, cars, it's all paved and cars have been going in and out of there. You go up to them and now they look at their plan, they say, well, no, that, all it is is the driveway that goes up behind the barn. Because that's all there was for years.
No, I deal with DOT, that parking area that you see is there.
It's been there for a long time.
Yeah, so I didn't see.
Well, if it is, it is, but.
We're not changing anything to, to go to them, to anything new or different here, it's the same, same thing.
Well, as long as they, as long as they're fine with it, but like.
You should see the, what the DOT has on file for that lot. And it's just to cover everybody. You know.
Either that, you need very agile drivers.
Yeah, the, the, the parking and the, the the egress in and out of that, that parking area is just going to be a nightmare.
And that's a six.
With dockside when their vehicles are parking half into the road as well, so.
And I know that Main Street is a four-rod road down through there, so thirty-three feet off of Center, is that what's done there?
Is that retaining wall out back new?
No, no, there's nothing.
Seems to me there's room to park two cars side by side between the barn and the woods.
That's what I was just looking.
I mean, if you look at this picture, you, you wouldn't know that, but I believe you can park two cars behind that barn and that would take care of an apartment, so as far as adding that apartment, the, the parking's all set.
You're saying behind the building?
Behind that.
Above the retaining wall? Yes.
Between the retaining wall and the barn, there's enough room to park two cars side by side.
I know.
I question that.
You can. No, you can see the stone wall way up and back. That's, that's what I was thinking, I was gonna just make the comments, make a turnaround up there or where they could turn.
It's pretty steep. Put an elevator in.
Escavator, take care of that.
Yep.
Then you get into drainage.
And then you get into a major site plan.
But he wants.
Which takes the fun right out of it.
What I'm saying is that almost.
You want to have organized parking that fits an apartment.
Yeah.
Building here, so that's why we have nice neat parking. So he can manage that, everybody knows where their parking space is and that's what it is. It's already there, it's been there.
Is that how people currently park? Are they sitting that way or do they pull in?
I, I park there myself, the workers have been parking at, 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 at different angles.
Over the years, it's usually been head-in parking, that's basically what it's been over the years.
Historically, it's all head-in.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And I think the route on this one is clear as well, I mean, they gotta make a stop by division three and a stop by the ZBA and come on back and. Right?
I think so.
I would start with division three.
Yeah, I would agree with that completely.
I wouldn't spend another dime until I talked to them.
Right, because nothing else after that would make any sense.
That's very good advice.
Then you go to Plan B.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's going to change anything, the bill, it's been there for a number of years, I don't know how I could.
What you're, you're adding to it.
No, we're not adding.
Yeah, because you, you want to put in.
You're adding a unit.
Well, technically, there was another apartment in what burned.
There's five units there.
Yeah.
Oh, you know, I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was five.
It's all what they, it's all what they have.
In their paperwork.
But it was never approved.
You go and you say, this is my driveway, they go and they look at what it is.
So, you know, whatever may have been there is almost irrelevant because there's, it's a duplex, so, so you're adding a unit and, and that is going to increase the loading on, on the, the parking requirements and I think that, I think that that's very sage advice.
Well, it's not.
Yeah.
Parking, the load on the parking requirements is us. It's exiting onto the roadway that is division three because of this, it doesn't have the site. You don't have site and that's where you're going to have the problem. Come out and measure the site.
We have the site distance. It's just the volume of cars going by.
I'd be, I'd be, I'd be a little surprised if you had the site distance. But like I say, that's between you and division three. Go forth.
Not a problem. The zoning issue though, I don't see how that comes in, this is, it's not residential, you can't have two houses on one lot, and if you did, then you'd have to have, that would be, make it non-conforming, you have to go to zoning board for that, but this is multifamily that's allowed in the zoning.
Right, but, but the, the, the structure, the main structure is over the setback by quite a bit.
It's not, he's remodeling inside, he's not doing anything else.
No, but it's, it's an existing non-conforming lot, so therefore, any changes in the usage on that lot has to go before the ZBA for approval before it can come to us.
You're not making it any worse, so, I mean, I don't see the, there's, you know, it's going to be a big friction.
I have, I mean, I, I struggled with this when I first got the application because what, in my eyes, what I'm looking at, I understand it used to be a multifamily, but it isn't now. So what I'm looking at is a duplex with a request to put an accessory dwelling unit.
Why isn't it now, I mean, what happened that it isn't now?
Because it doesn't connect anymore, they're two separate structures.
And the definition is a single structure.
So what I look at is a duplex with a request for an accessory dwelling unit that's not allowed with, with two, because you already have two dwelling units in the, in the two-family. So that's why I struggled when I first got this application. I wondered what I.
I see why you struggled with it.
So in my eyes, it used to be a multifamily, it's currently not a multifamily. So that's, I'm having a hard time getting over that.
Well, what is it now? He's, he bought it as a multifamily and he's changing it over. Hasn't changed from multifamily, right?
But it never had an original site plan.
Right, that's true.
So there was nothing ever tied to the fact that that was an approved multifamily with the town at any point in time.
Right.
So now currently, it doesn't stand as a multifamily, it stands as a duplex.
I'm not sure, that could predate zoning. That's been there a long time.
That's been there since I was.
Right, but if he's going to add that apartment above the garage, that's not an allowed use with a duplex.
But it, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not being argumentative, I'm just.
I know, I'm just trying to figure this out.
Yeah. But there was an apartment there as well as a commercial space on the first floor and that was there, the only reason they are separated is because of fire.
Right.
That took the two buildings, so that was Downing Jones's house and that was, he saved that and changed that over to apartments back a long time when I was a kid. You know? And I think that might predate zoning, so you wouldn't have anything on file, that's my point I'm trying to go at there.
Right, but it doesn't exist as a multifamily today, when you come in for an application, you go by according to the current regulations.
Apartment, I mean, you said it's still an apartment. So she's saying it's not, you're saying it are, I mean.
So there is a current apartment in the garage?
Yeah.
You're saying, you're saying no.
Saying no.
I was gonna say.
I've been in the apartment.
I've been in the apartment.
In the garage?
In the garage, yeah.
I haven't been in there.
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I've been in there and I know.
Oh, what'd you say, you, you haven't been in there?
No.
Oh, you're shaking your head no.
Chris Johnson lived in there for many years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So there is an existing apartment.
And there's a flight of stairs to the third floor.
Yeah, the issue is it severed all the utilities when there was the fire.
Well, you can't be done because of the fire.
Right.
That's not your fault, that's not the property's fault.
There is an existing apartment.
Okay.
So if I go to the zoning board, I gotta say, okay, we already have apartments in this building, but now we want to get approval to have units here, two, two, two apartment units, we already have those.
No, my understanding is, is that the tax card already states that there's, it's a duplex, two units in that main structure.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, is that you, we have to look at the lot as a whole and that structure is a non-conforming structure because it doesn't meet setbacks. So the minute you go to change the use, and I know that there's a question as to whether you're changing the use
Right.
of that garage, that's the trigger that says you have to go before ZBA for the approval. The, the, the fact that there may or may not have been an apartment or, or, you know, clearly was an apartment, I guess, but it, you know, it was, it's not on record, not on the tax card, obviously it was not habitable if there was no power to it and I don't know when the fire occurred, but.
Probably ten-ish years ago, I'm saying somewhere around there.
At some point, it's time to make things right on the record and, you know, make it legal.
Well, you know, now that you look at that, if it was that long and it wasn't re-energized with utilities, they may have lost the grandfathering status.
It hasn't been an apartment in ten years.
Yeah, you could have lost that status.
Right, and the ordinance talks about a six-month span of time after a fire. That's what that is.
I thought they had two years like Tom said, but, but two years, six months, it's all relative.
Yeah, it's been longer than that.
Unfortunately, I think that that probably is the, the route to take and, you know, go to DOT first and foremost, maybe a very wise move.
Yeah.
Did you say that was a four-rod road?
Yes, that is. Yes, that is, Main Street is a four rod road. Or actually, Old Bay Road. That's what it's, on the old deeds, it's listed as Old Bay Road.
Should we continue this or? What do we do?
Oh, wait.
Or do they have to start over?
Well, actually, I was, I was gonna ask Jessica, you know, that as, as well as, you know, I mean, this is, do, do we ask for public input or, I mean, or reject this or?
I think we oughta find out what District Three thinks first.
Well, like, I don't think that's gonna change the fact that, that they do have to go before ZBA, and we can't even hear this case.
Do the ZBA and District Three, but I mean, District Three might turn around and say, oh, you can't put any parking at all in there.
So I feel like the board could continue it.
Yeah, I agree.
Continue it to next month, or you can continue it a couple of months out.
Well, let's put it this way, why don't we do it next month? Um, and if we need to extend it, another one Tom just needs to ask for.
So they can come in as soon as possible. Well, can I interject? I mean, they only get so many continuations, correct?
None if they attend them. Those who don't attend their continuation.
Well, I mean, aren't you sending them to the ZBA? Yeah, they have to go to the ZBA. Oh, is the ZBA before us?
Yes.
After us?
Oh, but.
Yeah, they meet.
So they could get into the ZBA.
By the time you're done with notifications.
Yeah, they could go to the ZBA and then they could come to planning.
Yeah, but he's looking at the timing of it.
Yeah, it's a couple of months.
So why don't we just go to two months then, I think? That way they have a chance to deal with Division Three and then get in on the agenda for the ZBA.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
You're saying they gotta contend with District Three before the ZBA?
That's, that's their call.
That's just a wise. So I'm just saying that that would be me. I would do that.
Any change to what happens, then DOT wants to have their finger in it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm going through that right now, so. I went and asked the state in my area, District Three, first, before I decided that what I was gonna do and they.
That's a good move. I mean.
All right, so.
They were okay.
The recommendation would be to continue this to May seventeen.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye, aye. If, by the time they get to the ZBA, they can't make next month's meeting.
Oh, gotcha.
They, the dates won't work.
Okay, good luck.
Sorry, guys.
Thank you.
We'll make it a sixty-six for four years.
That's, that's why I said thirty-three off of Center.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We own a piece of land that's got a two rod road, power road across.
And I think School Street is a four rod road as well, because that used to be one forty. That's why the power lines go down that street.
Yeah.
See what I thought about the board.
Tailboxes?
All right, so, uh, next case is P twenty-two dash.
I don't know.
I have no control over that.
Twenty-two dash oh-nine.
I do, that's where it stops.
Okay, can I have the board's attention?
Sorry about that.
All right, next case, P twenty-two oh-nine, SFC Engineering Partnership Agent for Meadowlark Holdings LLC. This is, uh, the design review, major site plan to add the existing, add to the existing campground, twelve additional camp sites.
Oh, this is okay.
Bathhouse and a pavilion.
Yeah, I was reading this. I love this. I hear Meadowlark, I think of the lemon, the basketball player.
He's been dead thirty-five years.
Well, I'm older than that.
Obviously left on pressure.
I don't remember it.
So this is just a review at this stage.
Oh, good.
You need to understand this one.
Do we have any grandchildren here that can help everybody out? Nice job.
This is a piece of property owned by Mr. Roberts.
You're so high tech, Jessica.
Right. Yeah, Robert Snoll.
That's all Josh. I just do what he tells me to do.
Smart.
All right, so if you would like to introduce yourselves and give us an overview?
Sure. Excuse me, my name is Dan Flores with SFC Engineering. And with me here is Kirk Coulter. He's the owner of Robert Snoll Campground. We're here tonight for design review for the addition of twelve seasonal RV campsites, a bathhouse and a pavilion. Should I go through the entire project now?
Absolutely.
Uh, in the plan set that, that was submitted, sheet number two is an overview plan. Just wanna talk about the existing conditions first. This campground was developed approximately back in two thousand and two. There is a special exception granted on February first, two thousand and one, for up to two hundred campsites. There's seventy-four campsites today. There's also an office, club and bathhouse, a pavilion, carriage house, pool, playground and sports fields. My nice color plan does not show up too well up there. My apologies, but basically this and this is the existing campground. There is Route twenty-eight down here and the entrance is the campground here. The development today also includes six acres of defined common land. It's served by a public water supply. Well, right here. Uh, there's also three state-approved septic systems that service the campground. One here, these sites, here for the bathhouse right here. It's another butterfly here for these sites. The property is within the, um, rural district. The property is not within Shoreland Protection Overlay District. There is, um, up here with east side direction, that is not subject to protected shoreline state. The best of my knowledge, the property is also not within the Aquafor Protection Overlay District. I'd like to be with you afterwards about that at some point.
Sure.
Um, and that's going by the, uh, the Aquafor Transmissivity Tables on Granite. There are two wetlands on the site that are subject to the twenty-five foot setback. Specifically, here, here, there's also a small.
Little finger there.
Small wetland pocket here. The operating season for this campground is Mother's Day weekend to Columbus Day weekend. Um, and the, I hadn't said this before, but these are all seasonal campsites, so, um, the unit is left in place. There's no check-in, check-out, transient type camping. Our proposed development is for twelve seasonal RV campsites. And I'll show you a detailed plan in a moment, but now sites right here, twelve sites. We're also proposing a bathhouse here that'll be just like the bathhouse here. Pavilion here that'll be similar to the larger pavilion that exists here. This development with the twelve campsites will include an eighteen-foot wide gravel road, water distribution from the existing well, and a new septic system right here. Stormwater management will be via, uh, three bio-retention areas here for the two buildings, here for this portion of the sites, and one here for the sites and roadway. The total impact area for that is ninety-nine thousand one hundred square feet. This plan also shows a master plan. At some point, the owner would like to develop more sites and, um, it made sense to look at this as, as a whole, to make sure that, um, everything fits together in the future. And we had it, we had it done, so I figured I would include it in this site plan application, just to get your reaction and discuss it briefly. Other sites.
See, all through here.
That's an additional fifty campsites, again, seasonal RV campsites. On this side, there'd be ten seasonal cabins. Residents here for the manager. Shop here. A greenhouse up here. Shop. With that future development, again, we're not asking for that today, but just in the future, dissipate another well here. Augment the existing well here so that everything would be connected together as one, one water system. This development will also include a septic system here for all these sites. Other septic system here, manages residents and ten cabins.
Will the cabins be seasonal or year-round?
It would be seasonal, um, and actually, the hope is, uh, winter season, which I know is not current. Loud.
It act, it actually just passed.
Did pass.
Yeah, on Tuesday. Winter season and seasonal cabins in the rural zone.
That was one thing we worked on last year.
Yeah, so.
But no year-round usage.
Right.
There has to be a division between the seasons.
Right, no more than.
One month.
No more than six months occupancy. They cannot gain residency by using, that was the, the trigger is no residency.
Yeah, there's no residency. It's all seasonal.
Right.
But between the season, there has to be a period of space.
Of close, right?
It's a duration of.
It's.
I think we planned it for like two months, I think.
Yes, listed in the seasonal use.
Right, cuz you can close October twelfth, but not much happens in the fall other than leaf peeping. But December fifteenth, we thought through to March fifteenth would be a good winter season.
That's fine by me. Yep. Sounds great. Thank you. No, we've been thinking about it for quite a, actually, and I've been talking about this for.
Several years. We, we, we've really identified a major need because all the cabins around the lake have fallen to McMansions, you know? And there's no place for the average family to come.
Or there were some very avid hunters who used to come from a distance and stay for six weeks.
Yep.
My intent is to cater to the snowmobile crowd. The snowmobile path runs right through the property and goes right to the lake.
Yeah.
Hunters are welcome as well, or any snowshoer.
Yeah.
Uh, depending on the amount of snow.
Yeah, so the two seasons are May one through October thirty and then December fifteen through March fifteen.
With the extra traffic is, what's the state saying about the entrance way going in and out? Is it a single entrance way right now or is it?
It's a sing, single entrance.
It's a single.
Incredible line of sight, though.
Yeah, that's like.
Realize the incredible line of sight, but if you've got a bunch of campers coming out and some trying to get in, it has the states, has this been run by the state with the full?
Yes.
You know, hundred plus sites?
Yeah, the, uh, the existing driveway permit, um, has approval for up to two hundred seasonal campsites.
So bingo. Yep, bingo. Nice job.
Lucky on that.
The girls, the girls did that. Yeah.
They thought a lot.
Yeah. Well, she had a lot of experience in the campground business.
Both of them did.
Yeah.
So this is what we're here for today. Again, it's, it's twelve campsites. There is a bathhouse pavilion. We've included photographs of both structures with our application as well as our plan of the bathhouse. Uh, again, the bathhouse will be just like the one that exists. Pavilion will be similar, just a smaller size. And this shows that we're, we're meeting the wetland setback. We're also proposing a, um, one point one point five acre common land addition.
That's that one.
So that'd be a total of seven point five acres of common land.
Use the wetland as, in calculating common land?
And, yep.
It's an interesting contour to overcome.
Yeah, you do.
I know, might as well get a question out first. The Conservation Commission had a comment about whether that pocket was a vernal pool or not.
Correct, um, this pocket here. We don't know. Um, the weather mapping was done in the fall. Um, to determine that, we'd have to go back to spring.
And you'll hear it.
Yeah. However, we're, for this proposal today, we're not in that area.
What about the longer one down at the bottom there in that common land? That one?
If it is, we're well with it, well beyond the hundred foot.
Yeah.
So, uh, we appreciate the comment from the Concom. Certainly, when we go for the additional sites, we'll address that. But for now, um, if you can demonstrate that we meet the hundred feet, I would hope that that would be acceptable.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a comment.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm under the impression that the Conservation Commission may not have been, uh, it may not have been clear to them that the sections that are indicated with the letter B.
Yep.
Are in the future. So that's, I'm sure that's probably why they brought that up now as compared to when you guys come in later on at some point with an amendment or, so that, just to clarify that.
Yeah, I'll admit that I tripped over that as well when I was doing my first run-through on the drawings. It was not crystal clear to me. It's like twelve units where?
Yeah.
Looks like a lot more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, generally, I think.
There's a huge need, I'll tell you that. You know?
Well, you know it too. I mean, how many people do you turn away?
Oh, well, I have quite the waiting list that would fulfill, um, most of the entire project right now.
But if word got out, you'd get.
Yeah, and I don't advertise you. These are friends of the family that, that are already current.
I think turtle crawls full. That's two hundred-ish in there.
Yeah. I think you're very forward-thinking on the cabins.
Yeah, a good move. And, you know, you should, can think about, you know, um, prac models, they can be winterized, they're winter-ready as well.
Well, um, all the utilities for any kind of campground is only two feet deep.
Right, well, well, if you do those cabins and they're winterized, those utilities are gonna be deeper, so when you're doing expansions, just go forth.
Right, for the cabins, it will be year-round for everything. It'll just be the seasonal.
Right. Because Gunstock does a lot of winter camping, but it's dry camping.
Right. That's a question.
Yes.
I can't imagine it.
I can't either. I, I closed mine up October twelfth, done.
Hopefully so.
All right, Jessica, you have something else?
Did you have a chance to review Dana's, uh, report?
I did, no issue.
Okay, and he happened to evidently has been waiting for this conversation, so. Right, you're already here.
What else would you do on a Tuesday night?
I actually haven't had a chance to look at any of his comments yet. It was kind of a crazy day trying to get ready for tonight, so. I'm gonna throw that out there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send a response letter to you.
Yeah. Yeah, send it to me and I'll forward it over.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a very feasible, very.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's well needed. It gets people back in the area. I mean, we've lost a lot, even though there's a lot of people here, there's a lot of, not space for the smaller people to come anymore.
The people that can't afford it.
Right, right, yeah, the guy that's on minimum.
Middle income.
Right, yeah.
And you said.
They don't have a $600 million yacht.
Right.
An HDES septic construction approval is pending?
It has not been submitted yet.
Okay.
If it's not ready in time or we do submit, I'd like that to be a condition.
And we usually, the board usually does that as a condition anyway, so.
But the state's fast, submit them and then back that afternoon. Oh, yeah.
So really what you're asking for right now is just the 12 lots and the pavilion and the bathhouse?
Yes, sir. With the septic.
Oh, that's a, it's a given.
So we have it in for water supply to connect to the existing well. Sending in subdivision, which needs a water supply first, and then septic needs subdivision,
That's probably a managed system, is it? That has to have a class line or something like that.
It's a public water system.
Yeah.
Straight forward.
Yeah. Okay.
I think it's a great project.
Yep, I do too. Yeah, great, thank you.
If you're looking for a name for a road or something like that down there.
Oops, road.
No, 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 no.
This is part of the official record.
Uncle Irving.
Yeah, Irving would be, he's the Roberts and he is the official mayor of East Dalton.
And also, it was his property.
Right.
Oh, absolutely. And you can see his handprints all over the.
Yeah, I mean, he's worked with the girls for years, so I mean, it just, in the office to think about, you know, whether you have an offshoot down to the cabins or whatever, you need a lane road name, Irving Lane.
He would be well.
It would be well appreciated by locals.
Plus, you've probably already heard about the plane crash too, right?
I have heard about the plane crash, haven't found anything.
No, it was pretty well cleaned up.
What was this? So I didn't hear about the plane crash.
Yeah, it's a two.
Before you get into that story, can I just confirm what Dan, so you realize the next, the next step is a final major application?
Yep.
So the new application, you know, renotice and everything, newspaper and all that?
Yep, and to my knowledge, there are no waivers required.
Yep.
So I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
That's about 15 years ago, wasn't it?
Well, no, my, my 24, my daughter was just getting her license at 16, so she's 40, almost 41. There was a little cess in a single engine plane that they had a carbon dioxide problem in it. Occam's went unconscious and they were on autopilot and they just, when it ran out of fuel, it came down. It was a mess, but that's okay.
Ending for a flight.
Yeah.
Well, let's just say never knew.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll be back.
All right, move on to old business. We, A is we already dealt with, B is the master plan update. Who do we have giving that presentation?
That could be me, unless Tom feels like chiming in. We don't have Russ.
I don't have much.
He's really the one that talks. So, all right, then I'll just give them a brief update, Tom. So we're just, you know, still trucking along on the update. We started working on chapter three and that included some natural resources, natural and historic resources. So we're hoping to have that sort of buttoned up soon to provide to the board to take a look at. I know Tom is working with Tara on the land use section.
We do need replacement volunteers from the planning board.
And that, that's on.
I'm the only planning board member left.
That's on my agenda.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that. I'm sorry. I didn't read it that way.
Yeah.
I'm just digging for help.
That's pretty much where we're at right now. The, actually, the second warrant article passed, so that was good. So we can actually, you know, have help from her to not only just have sort of the draft presentation in September, but to continue from there and, you know, do like a final writing and maybe add in some, you know, design reviews and things like that and really make it a entertaining document. That's about it.
All right. Thank you. Next item up is a discussion regarding the election results.
So normally I put this on after the town vote takes place. It gives us the opportunity to talk about warrant articles, say like from CIP that didn't pass or zoning amendments that didn't pass, but literally everything passed.
Everything.
It was unanimous.
As well as the school. Everything passed.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Can I just chime in here for a second?
Sure, this is the discussion.
So I was on the CIP committee.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we did on that committee was is we would take the town's needs, enormous amount of money that it costs, and we would stretch it out over the years. So a little bit would get put away each year. So in time down the road, there isn't a major.
No big spikes.
No big spike to the, okay, so we did this, the selectmen approved it, and then last week we bought a friggin' excavator. How does that happen?
Was it scheduled?
It wasn't, I don't think that was scheduled. I think that was in addition to.
I don't recall an excavator.
That's, that's a bad thing. I mean.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the planning board had anything to do with that.
No, 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 no. What he's trying to say is why are they wasting their efforts when people do as they done well please and they've laid out a plan to have a nice gradual, you know, capital improvement plan?
Obviously, there's got to be some approval process for that kind of expenditure to have to go to the selectmen, right?
All the money that is set aside is for the selectmen as agents to expend. What that means, they can do whatever they done well please. So take that out of it.
They can override CIP recommendation then?
Well, yeah, they can.
CIP is simply a reference for the selectmen and the budget committee to use.
But I think by not following it, you kick the CIP committee in the teeth.
Otherwise, why are they?
They approved the plan. So the thing is, and they voted again. Roger, Scott and I worked on the, on the CIP for seven, eight years.
Yeah, ages ago.
And they didn't do anything, they just sort of, oh, great.
That's why we quit.
Exactly. But then finally, the selectmen came to the planning board and said, hey, we need the CIP. Because there's certain things that if the town is using the CIP, it gives them a certain, not so much cachet, but it gives them a sense of being able to get things that they can't get otherwise.
How to fix that is take away as the selectmen, as agents to expend. If you get that out of the article, then they've got to ask the voter to do it.
Can, may I speak to Roger's comment regarding the excavator?
Sure.
So, so this warrant article, the funds from this didn't come out of taxation. It came out of, came out of the general fund.
The funny money account.
So it didn't, it didn't increase, didn't increase taxes whatsoever. So I just wanted to just let you know that.
That's good, but it's still, what Roger's concern is, is still a valid concern.
So that.
Because that money could have been used to reduce taxes.
I mean, it should have. A general fund, I mean, there's a lot of other things.
Yeah. Well, all the income that's generated over the year goes into the general fund and that Lisa noise brought in thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars and they can spend that any way they want. And I think if someone really wants to police that, they should have a warrant article, it'll have to be a petition article, I'm sure, is to restrict the use of the general fund excess monies.
Yeah.
But.
Wasn't that a warrant article?
Yes, the excavator.
The excavator was a warrant article?
It was a warrant article.
Okay, then.
And it got approved.
Yeah, so but was it in the time slot that the CIP?
Right, right, but I mean, I think that was separate, that one was separate because that one got approved. It got, it was voted no, then they wouldn't have been able to get it.
Right.
But I think, well, the whole point, like what you said, is projections from department heads of saying, okay, you know, these trucks last 10 years. So in 10 years, we're going to need this type of truck and in 10 years after that, we're going to need that. And that's, I think, the point of it, so it's a projection over the next seven years of what you're gonna need. And like you said, it's a good idea to spread it out.
Right. You know? I think the lifespan of a fire truck, they went from 25 year lifespan, they dropped it to 20.
Right. But what's the sense of having a CIP? Exactly. If, if they're gonna be able to do what they want. But that got, that was a separate one, that was. Doesn't matter, it's still coming out of some. But the town, the town voted on it in the last election.
I realize that, but what I'm saying is.
If they voted no, then they wouldn't have been able to get it.
The question would be, did that show up in the CIP?
I don't know.
For this year.
Previous years.
Right.
Did they say, hey, we're gonna need an excavator in a couple of years?
Or was there a problem and we didn't have one and something happened to the one we had?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
We were renting, I think.
No, we owned it. It needed some extensive maintenance.
Yeah, it could have been, if you have a capital plan, that should really encompass it.
So the need for the excavator was sooner than later in order for it to, you know, to be on the plan. They needed now, not five years from now.
But they, someone should have known that maybe when they came and, you know, you never know.
Right.
I mean, stuff does happen. I almost used another word, but you know what I mean? Stuff happens.
All right, so, facilities committee.
Okay, facilities committee. That's another committee that I get to spearhead, although I will be getting assistance from the building department on sort of minutes and preparing notices and kind of getting some things together. I'm going to still be the person that schedules the meetings considering I scheduled five other committees, it's easier if I just keep the scheduling. So the facilities committee, I did meet with the selectmen, we're gonna start with fire and highway. So we're gonna have the fire chief, public works director, building inspector, myself and CIP representative, which Frank Rich offered. A master plan representative, Amy Taravakia offered to be on that committee. And as soon as the selectmen sort of figure out who the selectmen's rep is gonna be, that we'll start sort of gathering our thoughts together on this.
What are you thinking about starting the ZAC committee and things of that nature?
That will be soon and we can discuss that later on when you guys sort of divvy out who's gonna be.
Yeah, because we have the Airbnb to wrestle with, that's gonna be a real bear.
I have a comment to add on that as well, so when we get to there, burst that bubble.
So, so.
Thanks. That didn't sound good, did it?
So under new business approval of the minutes, so we have minutes from February 15th and that special meeting of March.
I confess, I did not get a chance to read them.
I only did a very brief review. I didn't see anything, anything out of ordinary in there. So I'll make a motion, I guess we'll start with the February 15th to accept the February 15th meeting minutes as written.
I trust you, Drew.
Okay, so we have, so Roger was there.
I was not.
Self, Tom and Bill. So we have motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Scott Williams abstains as I was absent.
And I abstained because I wasn't involved.
That's a good excuse.
Don't try to squeak out.
Okay, and then we have the March 1 special meeting. And again, I, I think everything was fine on that, so I'll make a motion to accept the March 1 meeting minutes as written.
I'll second that.
All right, and then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Scott Williams abstains as I was absent.
And I imagine Doug's.
Abstain as well.
All right. Correspondents for the board's review, oh, I skipped right over the, we have a, for the record, we had a copy of the invoice from.
I meant to do a breakdown, have that available to you guys for tonight, but I will have that at the next meeting, just so we can know where we're at with everything.
Breakdown?
Of the invoices.
Okay, good. So correspondence, so NHMA to hold a free virtual workshop for newly elected and/or experienced members on April 5th and May 17, 2022. You gotta sign up early for these things, actually the virtual ones.
Right, so these, so their virtual workshops, they usually get recorded, so if you're really interested, and I highly recommend that new members attend. You know, it gives you the opportunity to, you know, get some education on stuff and I know that's, that's important, the state's always trying to push mandatory regulations on new members, so if new members, you know, willingly volunteer to get schooled, it's all the better. So if you don't want to attend or can't attend either of these virtual meetings, they use a recorder and you can watch them at your leisure.
They're also very, very informative. I mean, and there's, there's a selection of different classes you can have in the morning and in the afternoon, and there's usually, you know, lunch, but you meet people from neighboring towns.
Well, that's the real ones. These are all virtual now.
Virtual one, yeah.
These are all online.
Virtual is, isn't virtual real?
No, no, virtual is unreal.
Watching a screen.
Yeah, that's, that's Zoom.
So you can do this in.
Why aren't they, virtual to me means real.
Nine to four or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, it's not an in-person.
Yeah. Okay.
And there's yet another offering for a free virtual workshop. This is through the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development, and they used to be called the Office of Strategic Initiatives. These will be held.
Called the Office of State Planning before that.
And these are held on Saturdays, so it's one conference held on two separate Saturdays. And again, they will be recorded if you can't attend or you can, but both of these need, you need to register ahead of time. So if anybody's interested, send me an email and also get you all signed up. Fisher Will.
Sorry, what's NHMA stand for?
New Hampshire Municipal Association.
All right, correspondents for the board's information, Yerkes Survey Associates.
So that was a site, that was a subdivision plan that there was an error on it, administrative error, so they submitted a new Mylar and five paper copies and I had Drew come in and sign it, just wanted the board to be aware of that.
Any other business come before the board? Public input? Seeing and hearing none, elections of officers.
So I just want to throw out there that, was it the February meeting, January or February meeting that you guys appointed Roger as the vice chair because Russ left?
Right.
So I don't know if as a board, you want to discuss whether or not you want to keep him as vice chair or just kind of.
Unless he wants to climb the ladder.
Drew, do you consider his third year?
I would consider a third year, just starting to get the hang of this.
I would propose Drew as chairman, thank you.
Why don't we just make that as a remaining, the slate of offices remain the same, that would.
I would, I would definitely say that. I didn't know we could.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, all those in favor?
Who's Secretary and who's Treasurer?
So we need a, yeah, you need a clerk.
We, who did we have last year?
No, Bob was, Bob was the, was the, was the Vice Chair. And Russ was the clerk.
Well, we, we failed, Tom.
Can I, I'd like to amend the former. Anybody want to be the clerk? How about Bill?
Signs in your absence.
Oh, there you go.
Bill.
I'll be the.
There you go.
I nominate Bill. You'll get a call from Jessica, come in, sign this.
All right, assigned committee members, Alternative Housing Committee, CIP, Master Plan and Zack.
I wrote them all out because I needed to know who was doing what.
I would like to remain on Zack and.
Okay, can we start with Alternative Housing?
Sure, I'll remain on that.
Okay, so I had for, for Alternative Housing Committee, I have Bill, Roger and Scott.
I'd like to stay on that too.
Yeah.
Okay. For Zack, I, you want to stay on it?
Yes, please.
Okay, Scott, I need three members from the planning, from the planning board for Zack.
I've been on it since the beginning. I, I, I don't know if somebody else wants an opportunity.
I'll do it again.
Yeah.
It's, it's a really impress, it's probably the best committee in town.
I was gonna say that, but thank you.
It's, it's two selectmen, no, it's one selectman.
Yep.
And two ZBAs.
Right.
And.
Three.
Three Planning Board and the Planner and the Building Inspector. And it's going over the concepts of the problems that, let's say, John Dever has with something coming in. Like we had this evening, Jessica was saying we have to find a way to, to reinstitute this, the, the manuals. To list them. So you find, you have to change the wording in our site plan review.
And, and we did the, the cabin colony thing.
Yeah, exactly. But I mean, you know, if, if somebody else would like to do it, I'm, I'm gonna get. Heavy into the master plan, I think, this year.
Doug, would you like to be on that?
Sure, sounds like it's a good place to start.
I mean, you will, you will learn a lot and you will meet some interesting people, really.
Yeah.
Okay, so for Zack, I have Scott, Drew and Doug.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. CIP, I need one planning board member.
I'll remain.
Master Plan Committee, so we only currently have Tom now that we lost Bob and Russ.
How often does that mean?
What it's, what it is, is, is right now, is the Master Plan Committee is. We have several citizens as well who work with us on, and actually, we have a citizen who's going to be the chairman now. And she's very good. And, and quite organized. The, the concept is, is trying to get together the master plan in organized fashion. And then as we work on different chapters, we have to have other people break down into committees to work on some of these things. So you. You don't want to spread yourself too thin, but at the same time, you need other bodies.
And just so you know, the master plan is kind of like the Holy Grail of what happens in town. Because that's the vision, shall we say, of what they'd like to see happen. So it's extremely important.
If we want to grow in a certain direction, we have to provide for that. Because if the town doesn't have a new design for, let's say, conservation easement or some other thing, it's not permitted. Master Plan hasn't said this is something we should work towards.
You know, or if, let's say, off the edge, if there's an industrial zone needed, they say, we, we have identified the need for an industrial zone. And then it would be up to the planning board to find a place to put it. But you're, you're looking at the needs of the town, the future needs of the town is more importantly. And so I, it's a very, very important.
Is that where the, the survey and all that, when they did the survey?
Survey applies tacked on to that.
That came, came from the master plan, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, one of the things that Jim Sessler always used to say was that the vision, the zoning and the master plan are sort of your triumvirate. That he can't defend the town unless they're all in agreement.
Right.
If they disagree with each other, they're done. So that's the, the care in putting it together. Now, our assistant, Tara Bamford, is fabulous. In that, what, what is good is that she is looking at this from the point of view of a professional. Taking into consideration all the different stuff that we had in the questionnaire, the survey. And listening constantly. She's interviewed all the heads of departments and whatnot in town. And. She knows how to listen. It's a, it's a true art, it really is. But then she is really capable of writing something in a very neutral way so that it is not. I wrote the last land use chapter. It was a bit intense, perhaps. So that I, I understand it now, seeing how some of the stuff that she's written. How more readable it is. And a master plan is no good if people don't use it. It's no good sitting on a shelf. It's something that has to be referred to back in frequently. So the, the more we sort of get set up and used to it and. People care to participate, that's great.
So currently, the master plan is meeting twice a month. We're trying to get all the chapters, you know, updated, sort of written, all of our thoughts together. And so that we can present something for September. So we meet the first and the third Wednesday of the month currently. Up until September and then dates will change after that.
What time of day?
Six o'clock.
Four, four o'clock and six o'clock.
So six o'clock on the first, so we meet every first Wednesday, that's six o'clock. The third Wednesday of the month is four o'clock.
Ooh, ooh, that's a tough one.
Yeah.
Good for you, but.
Not, 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 not so bad if you're not working.
Yeah.
I might be out of state.
There's always a chance that we're out of town, you know, so.
What's that?
No, I mean, you, you can't make every meeting, but you try to make them.
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying. I, I, when I truck, I truck. I'm not. That's why I miss some of the meetings is because.
You're trucking.
I'm trucking, I mean.
Yeah.
Three members.
Just, just make sure you, you notify Jessica. If you're, if you know you're gonna be out of town for a main meeting.
So originally.
No, that's what I'm saying. I, I. I, I'd probably miss more than what I would make. Because I'm, I'm constantly, I'm constantly out of state.
If you're not rolling, you're not making money.
I'm in Massachusetts.
Oh, I'm sorry for you.
No, actually, I enjoy going through Massachusetts.
I get scared driving through Massachusetts.
When you're in a log truck, it don't matter.
No, I guess not. They don't try to cut you off too often.
If they do, they're stupid.
So we have Tom, Tom, obviously, you're, you're one. Bill has volunteered as well.
Super. Okay, stop right there. So.
Breaks on.
So originally, we only had five citizen members. We have now accumulated a sixth. So I would like it for, to stay at two planning board members. Because if we have three, then we have a committee of ten and we don't have that odd vote. Just throwing that out there. You should always have an odd number of people on a.
That's why you're there, Jessica.
So Bill, so Tom and Bill.
Tell us where to go.
Right. All right.
I think that's all the committees.
So the first and third, what, Wednesday of each month.
Right, and to answer. Scott's question about when does the Alternative Housing Committee begin?
Yeah.
Is what I'm waiting on again is the selectmen to vote on who the.
Air alignment.
Yeah, who the selectmen rep is.
All Zuzgo, I think, wants to remain on that too.
Yep, I'm gonna, and we do have that. The four other, three other citizen members.
You have all the citizen members you need? Because I'm.
I do, yeah, we voted on that.
I'd like to say.
Few meetings ago.
Sylvia Leggett.
She'd be good.
She would be really good because she, she, she knows the how, little, well, she is the one that started Roberts Cove campground.
Potentially, we could have.
Knows the rules, regs, everything.
If she wants, yeah, if you want to put her on, I mean, if Jessica, I don't want it overrun with people because sometimes you don't get anything done if there's too many.
We only have so many seats at the table.
Right.
Yeah, but if, if you're looking, if you ever need an extra on that committee, Sylvia Leggett would be a.
All right.
If he's interested.
Yeah. Here comes that train again.
So to, to further, I'm just gonna wrap this up real quick for you. The Planning and Zoning Consultant warrant article passed. So that means that we can have the assistance with Tara.
Yep, that'll be good.
So that's, yeah, wonderful. So our, our focus was switched over to short-term rentals. Other than, because we were working on that open subdivision.
You kind of got sucked into it, actually.
So, yeah. Sorry. So to further that, is, there's a bill currently in front of the legislature. That is trying to restrict the towns from regulating short-term rentals.
Trying to restrict them from doing that?
Correct.
Wow, why?
I don't know why.
Someone had, owes a bunch of short-term rentals and they don't want to be regulated.
So I, I need to have a conversation with John and kind of, we need to refocus. What our first task is, because it, it would be a waste of time and money to start talking about a short-term rental ordinance. Until, if the state in July, that's when it would go into effect, if it passes. It would be a waste of time. So we need to kind of reassess.
Well, we can talk about other things, you know, in that frame, frame and just keep an eye on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that. So that kind of blew that out of the water for, as our first.
Yeah, because that's, was our big topic that we felt.
That's why we went ahead and got three other citizen members.
Yeah, for self-defense.
You know?
Yeah. Well, really, I mean.
Okay.
Got all the committees?
Yes.
All right, so I'll entertain one last motion.
So moved, let's go home.
Sorry, meeting's over.